Take your event to the next level with Crossroads TV. Professional audio and video production, multi-camera live streaming, audio system for your panels and entertainment, plus stunning video screen production on LED walls. High-quality, seamless production tailored to your needs. Let us bring your vision to life. Contact us today.
Welcome to the City Council Budget Workshop. This is Thursday, April 3rd. And if you need an agenda for what we're going to review this evening, they are located by the door, as they always are. And tonight, we are going to start off with Public Works. Brian, if you want to lead us off into each one like we did last time. Make that workflow.
Yeah, we are going to start with Public Works, then move on to Cemeteries, then Parks and Recs.
Sure.
The budgets tonight, as you heard last time, there are no additional headcount here. And again, I think they've done the best job as possible in keeping costs reined in and down, but there are some certain drivers here for sure that we'll hit on. So, starting with Public Works. Am I on the right page? So, we are, and just another note, we are currently beginning negotiations with Teamsters, which is our Public Works collective bargaining unit. So, we're anticipating some adjustment there also, but that's currently in the works. So, Matt, I don't know if you want to hit on just some of the highs or some of the things that may stand out. A lot of these items through here are pretty routine. Not too much has changed, but there are some lines that kind of stand out also. So, for example, vehicle, equipment and maintenance, it was a little bit of a jump there, but some of the other sort of highs, if you want to just review.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I'll walk through it. We'll go page by page. I made some highlights on things that might be of interest to you, and if you see something else, I'm happy, obviously, to answer questions you have. So first, we're real proud of the team that we have at Public Works, Parks and Rec, Cemeteries. We've got a lot of hard-working, dedicated people, do a great job. It's a good team environment over there, so we're very happy about that. And another thing about Public Works, well, Public Works much more than Parks and Recreation, but I hope you understand that it's very unpredictable as far as what our expenses are going to be. It's just, a lot of it is based on the weather and the infrastructure. We can project certain things are going to fail, sidewalks, roads, guardrails, culverts and things like that, but really, it's hard to put a number on it every year. So, when we're going through the budget, if you see things in the actual line, like you budgeted $100,000, say, for example, and you've only spent 20, well, we've got three months left is one, and a lot of times, we wait until the end. If we have to purchase things, we will. But then, a lot of times, there are natural occurrences, and there are accidents and all kinds of things that happen where we oftentimes do need the full budget. So, just wanted you to know that going into it. So, if we're all on page 38, is that right?
I have 45.
Oh, I was hoping we would be.
It's...
Okay, 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 but I'm right. I was going to start on...
Line 36.
Okay, so I'm on line 45. I think that's a good place to start.
Under Administrational Labor Costs.
Yeah, yeah, so same line numbers.
Administrative Revenue.
Sorry?
What'd you say?
Labor Costs.
Administrational Labor Costs, line 45.
Gotcha, 45.
So, for Administration and Labor, and I guess I won't get into everything, but that's our office. That's myself, our Executive Assistant, our Assistant Engineer, our Shop Foreman, and our Highway Superintendent. So, there are five of us altogether. Andy McPherson is not included in our budget. As you probably know, he's in his own department, Engineering, so he's not here. So, not a lot of increases there. There was nothing that jumped out at me. Also, in the operating cost for Administration, it's pretty much straightforward as far as matching up with the 25 budget. There's not much different there. So, under Fleet Maintenance Revenue, line 73, just want to be clear that the revenues that we project for motor fuel are for all departments. So, the Fuel Island at the compound serves Public Works, Parks and Rec, of course. It serves Police, Fire, Kennebec Water District, the School Department, and KSTD. So, that number's large for a reason because it serves six different groups. But then, when we get to expenses, it's just Public Works.
So, those... Pardon me, I'm sorry. The reimbursements, then, that's would be like KWD or something like that?
Correct.
Yeah.
All the other departments, that's all.
Oh, and the other departments.
Yep.
In-house departments, that's just moving money around inside the city.
Correct.
I got you, yeah.
Thank you. So, if we flip the page, we do have a few notes here. Line 86 is higher. So, in Fleet Maintenance, we have four full-time employees. You know, there are mechanics. They take care of all of our equipment, citywide. So, line 86 is higher. We recently, very happy to have been able to fill a position that had been vacant with a third full-time member on the floor. So, that number with his insurance went up a fair amount from last year.
Line 86 for me, I don't know if it was a group health insurance?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's the one, Counselor, yeah. So, last year's budget was 54. We're budgeting 83 this year, so that's quite a jump, just based on personnel. Vehicle and Equipment Maintenance, line 94. 15 last year, 25 this year. It's really, it's based on inflation. Not so much terrorists, but we could, we could, we're keeping them in the back of our head, but it's just, it's all the equipment and all the suppliers that we use. The cost for doing businesses going up. Oftentimes, with transmission and exhaust work. Motor fuels, like I had mentioned before, so the expense line is just for Public Works, 135. And those numbers, based on the contracts...
Matt, one quick question. Sorry, just going back to the fuel equipment, I mean, I know that space is limited. Do we stock certain things on in-house, you know, in anticipation of routine breakdowns or in place of terrorists or things like that? Like, hey, let's pick up a few more of these because we know we're going to need them.
We do.
Yeah, okay.
Tires and parts.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, going back to motor fuels, line 95, yep, that 135. So, those numbers, and Christina, I think you sent out an email, both of our contracts for diesel and gas are down, and these numbers were based on the numbers we had last year for contracts. So, all those numbers for all of our budgets are going to come down. So, that's something to look forward to. Somewhat significantly because the savings for both contracts is quite a bit lower. City refuse, that's our trash and recycling. We have three full-time staff members on this crew. Line 107, you'll see our projected revenue for Pay As You Throw, the Purple Bag Program. We're projecting less because we want to be safe. We can't, you know, the numbers are fairly consistent over the years. I feel comfortable with 315 as a projected revenue for this year's Pay As You Throw. So, then if we flip the page...
May I ask you a question, Counselor?
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, just on the Pay As You Throw revenue, it looks pretty solid on the year-to-date line. So, why are you estimating less?
The year-to-date, I see 232.
Well, sorry, I mean, you know, through the first two quarters, the closest numbers we have. So, if that's six months' worth of revenue...
Yep.
But you don't think that you'll make 315 again?
We could, I just, I always, you know, projection-wise, Counselor, I always am careful. We could make it, and it's likely that we will. I just, I wouldn't want to...
Okay.
Yeah.
It did, it did go up for this budget year. It looks like it was pretty flat the last two, and then it bumped up 25. Is that, was that part of the last-minute adjustments we did?
It was.
Yeah? Okay. Yep, okay.
What is the, where's the revenue from the Pay As You, the Purple Bags? Where does the revenue go? Does it go back into the General Fund? Does it go back into Public Works?
General Fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask a question, too?
Of course.
I'm just trying to, so, looking at this stuff here, you know, the refuse lines from 104 downward, the revenue and costs, and how does that relate to lines 14 through 16? I was just trying to understand what... This looks like a typo to me or something, like, is it, no, maybe it's not, because it's 112 up from 19. I'm just trying to understand what's going on. It's clearly my inability to fathom something that is probably pretty simple, but I don't understand that, those stuff.
Well, I think that if we just take, and someone else can, Christina, you could try and in if you'd like, but if we're looking at line, like you said, 14 through 16, and the City Manager proposed FY '26, total revenue projection is 400, and anticipated expenses are at 537, so we would be in the red, 137,000.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Why is the revenue projected to go down, but our costs are going up so significantly?
Yeah, I guess I'm not following you. I don't see our costs going up that significantly.
Well...
I just, I just, maybe I'm just not seeing the, I'm on the right line.
So, the budget in 2025 was, fiscally, 2025, we spent 460, essentially, and it's proposed to spend 537. That's, you know, about...
Oh, okay, okay.
That's about $80,000.
Yeah.
And so, that's going up 80,000, but the revenue's going down 35,000. So, that's a difference of, yeah, the number's correct there, 137. And that gap, that's a pretty big gap compared to other years. The biggest one was, well, we only go back to '23, but there was 75 grand difference in '24. What is supposed to be different about this coming year that it's, I mean, that's like twice the largest gap so far? I mean, if it was like a small number, I wouldn't have paid attention to it, but that's, you know, $140,000 is a significant amount of money.
Yeah, yeah, that's, thank you. Probably our contract with Pine Tree, the tipping fees, I would say, would be the likely culprit, Counselor. Last year, tipping fees, I have it here, should have been here. Tipping fees...
Oh, 127?
What line, you want?
Line 131.
Oh, yeah.
Right, that would explain about $30,000 of it, and then, I guess, the health insurance would, I think we were up about 30 or $35,000 in the health insurance.
So, a little bit of a perfect storm there.
A little bit, and then, and like I said, maybe I should just have more courage when I'm projecting revenues, too. You know, that's part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's always nice to be pleasantly surprised.
Right, same. That's kind of my mentality.
I guess now I'm a little confused because it does look like the refuse, so the refuse cost is going up significantly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But I don't see it, I guess, my question is, what's included under that line 14 in refuse cost? Is that 128, lines 128 through 136?
Right.
Because that's not going up very much at all, only 13%. And here we have...
I would say that one, that line 112 is a sum of line 114 and 128.
Say that again?
One, so line 112, which is the total refu cost, would be a summary, would be an addition of lines 114 and 128. Those would be the collection costs.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's the tipping fees and the...
So, the solid waste, the solid waste charges, so...
Are you?
So, right here.
Oh, over here?
Yeah, so, on this one, right, so here's 112, which is the total. Okay, and then, under this, under refuse collection, there's two sections. There's the labor costs and then the operating costs. So, this is what it costs the crew to go out and do it, and then, this is what we pay to get rid of it. And then, those two is the total cost for the, for the change, for the collection.
Okay, but it doesn't add up to 112, 886.
Which one? Which number are you looking at?
This number here. I mean, that's a 461% increase. I think perhaps there's an error.
Yeah. Where do you, what number, what line is that?
So, line 14.
114?
Yeah.
Well, it's because that number is a net number, right?
I don't even have that in the...
It's just line 14. Yeah, just line 14. It's in the summary. It's in the summary.
461.1.
Yeah, it's just a net number, and so, the, some years when the cost and the revenue line up, that number's very small, and sometimes, they both head in the same direction, and it's also can be minimal, but...
Well, the budget is showing a jump from 24,482 to 137,368.
Yeah, there's something wrong.
Yeah, there's something wrong there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Christina, maybe we can look at that and report back? Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, getting back into it, so City Refuse, Operating Costs, Operations and Maintenance. Operations and Maintenance is our, kind of our full crew. We have 13 full-time employees in this department. Line 150, just to be aware, again, based on the unpredictability of the weather, it's difficult to predict overtime numbers, so we're projecting 50, although we'll have gone over this year, but we're, yeah, we're projecting 50 for next year as well, hoping that it's a quiet year.
And that's mostly snow.
It is. It's storm events, right? There have been, I think, 16 or 18 this year, and they've all been in the evening or on the weekends and holidays. It's been tough in the budget department.
We need to, we need to schedule those storms a little better.
The week, day, yeah.
Mother Nature is one of the four days.
All right. Okay, Operations and Maintenance, Operating Costs. Line 168, Road Maintenance. This was a budget last year that we added $100,000 to, to use for help in paving some of the smaller roads with a, it's called a drag shim program. So, now that we have our contract with Longfellow's this year, we've got a real good idea on what the budget's going to be for drag shims per foot. So, we have a, we have a short list of streets that we'll be using what's left in our bond budget with $100,000 in this account. So, I think we can look forward to paving a few more streets this year in addition to what we reported on the other night, just a few. So, yeah, try not to get your hopes up. It doesn't go that, you know, $100,000, $200,000 doesn't go as far as it used to. Salt and Sand, it's a big budget, but we, but we need, right, we're budgeting what we're projecting that we'll spend 300,000, and we need $300,000 for next year. Traffic Maintenance, this is all of our traffic signals and streetlights. We have actually just one full-time employee in this department. It also includes road painting, I'm sorry. So, line 195, Traffic Signal Maintenance, you'll see we're down 15,000. Central Main Power has assumed more, more of a role and responsibility, which is nice for the traffic signal maintenance, so we're comfortable with 20.
So, that 20 grand is some fractional FTE or something?
I'm sorry?
It's a fractional full-time equivalent? That's not, that's not a person's wage?
Oh, no, that's, I'm under operating cost.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 I mean...
So, it's not, it's not a person, it's materials and equipment.
Yeah, pardon me, thank you very much.
Yep. So, for miscellaneous supplies, I met with Christina, and I think that a better, a better title for this is going to be Painting Program or Painting Supply, Supplies. We're hoping to have a healthier budget in this line. So, last year, it was $25,000. We're not asking for 105, so I adjusted that to 85, so I'll get with Christina on that. And what that's for is we sub out a portion of our road painting program. It's the handwork. That's all your stop bars, arrows, crosswalks, and parking stalls. So, that contract came in at about $50,000 this year.
It's recently approved.
Just recently approved, yeah. And this will be the third year that we've done this program, and we haven't budgeted for it. We've just used anticipated savings from other accounts, and I think because of the amount, it should have its own, it should have its own budget.
It has its own one, though.
Where?
It's line 200.
200, Painting and Striping?
Yeah.
I did create it, you asked me to.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that. Yeah.
And the other one does test out the numbers to test out the factual.
Okay, well, that's great, thank you. I didn't realize that you had gotten to that.
Yeah. It's just the, the cost was going in the opposite direction of the revenue, and so it's, it's because it's a net number. It's a net number.
So, thank you, Christina. I didn't, I didn't realize line 200 had been created.
It's okay.
It's all alone there, right at its very top.
I'm sorry? I see it, I know. I missed it.
It's all alone there, you know, you got to look for it, like, yeah.
Yeah. So facility maintenance, that's one full-time person on our crew, kind of a catch-all. He does a lot of carpentry, plumbing, and the electric work for city buildings. Not much change in the operating costs. Professional services has gone up a bit, that's our electrician, Tim Hamlin, who does work all over the city. We do charge out for other departments, but a lot of it is within public works that, that we charge off to, so we have bumped that line up to seventeen thousand five for, mostly for electrician, and it's also for plumbers. We have to sub out any plumbing work. Heating fuel is up from sixteen to twenty. Facility repair and maintenance is up from fifteen to twenty, and again, it's just the cost of doing business, subbing things out, buying materials and supplies, nothing is getting cheaper. Also miscellaneous supplies up from fifteen to twenty, same reason.
Any questions, any additional questions for the Public Works hat of Matt?
All right, let's move on to the Pine Grove Cemetery.
Yeah, thank you, not a lot here. Labor costs, well, so, yeah, we can look at revenues, we've got lot sales and burial income. Those are the two revenue sources for us. When we, when our expenses are higher than our, when our, yeah, when our revenues don't support all of our expenses, we tap from interest earned from a, from a fund, Christina, I'm not sure where this-
From the perpetual care funds that we took, were given to the city when you took over the cemetery, but you're only allowed to earn, uh, use what you earned the prior year. Any difference would come out of taxation, so if you, some years you break even and fully cover the cost. There was, last year or the year before, there was not much used in the way of labor and things, and the sales supported it, and the interest supported it. Some years, if you mow a lot, do terrain, or trim, or do a lot of things over there, then some of it will hit taxation if there's not enough for the fund. But the goal is to one hundred percent cover the difference between the earnings and the fund if we can, if it pays enough. We keep trying to make sure balances.
So I mean, the, the overall scale of all these numbers in the cemetery is, is pretty modest, is, you know, it's a cemetery. But at some point, the cemetery will get full, and then all of the, all of the costs are going to have to come from this perpetual care fund, is that right? Or be absorbed by the general fund of, of the city, is that right?
It would.
What, this is a bit of an actuarial question, but how, what, when can we expect that to happen? How mu- how much room is left in, in the cemetery?
That's interesting, I've talked to, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Hallie are cemetery sextons, they've been doing it for several years. So physical space, we don't have, right, it is, we're running out, but the, the, the trend is cremations, and they, it takes up much, much less space, so it's, it's really difficult to predict, but we've got quite a, quite a bit more room if they were to be primarily cremations.
I got you, is, is that a lower revenue generator thing?
Same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, it's, it's not a bad question, because Winslow's having the same issue now, and they're looking to, there was some, I saw some things on one of their web, on one of their meetings where they were looking to expand the cemetery, and things of that nature, and, and change things, so it's, it's, it's a good question to ask, to kind of have an understanding as to where we are and where we need to be.
It's a, it's a beautiful cemetery, Waterville's lucky to have it, I love it.
It is beautiful, it's been a big, it's been a challenge for us to maintain, though, if I'm being honest.
Sure, I'm sure.
It's just been really difficult to find staff, we'll talk about that a little bit more in the parks budget. So we're, we're, we scramble to, to, for maintenance of the cemetery. We bounce over there when we can, we'll grab laborers from Public Works to work alongside our seasonals from Parks and Recreation to get things up to snuff as best we can, but it's, it's, it's very difficult to maintain the cemetery for us, yeah.
My question is about the terms of the fund. Is there any mechanism for changing that so that we could draw more from the fund? Or, like, how is that set up? Is that in perpetuity?
We would probably have to get some legal advice on anything to do with trust-
Yeah, of course.
And the original terms. Usually the law, what I have seen is perpetual care funds is pretty solid, that you can't use it for certain things outside of, in the manner in which it was given.
Well, of course.
But I don't know who established those original guidelines, if it was the cemetery committee, the group that had it before the city, or if it came from statute, so.
Right, and I just, I would, would be good to look into, because obviously I'm not suggesting that we use the funds for some other purpose, but, but what I am thinking is that if, if the revenue, I think you said that the, the amount we can use has to match the revenue, and if revenue's dropping, and that fund is growing, then-
The main goal of that account was set up to protect the principal, that it never gets cut into the principal-
Right, sure.
Which is why it said you can use the earnings from the prior year to offset your maintenance costs.
Yeah, not revenue, it's, it's, it's-
It's the earnings on the fund.
Only, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the notion of perpetual care.
I, I misunderstood, I thought you meant the earnings, the, like, the revenue from, from the, not from interest, but from-
Like the loss sales.
Yeah, the burials, the actual operations, okay, thank you.
So the labor cost number, line twenty-seven, that's simply the thirty-two thousand, well, the, the nine thousand dollars in line twenty-six, that's for our sextons, the Hallies. And then the, the line twenty-seven, the thirty-two two fifty, that's, that's one seasonal lead at twenty dollars an hour for twenty-eight weeks, and then two additional seasonals at fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour for fourteen weeks. So that's how we got to that number of thirty-two two fifty, I just hope that we can find them.
And, and that's like not high schoolers, I guess?
Well, it, it could be, college or high school, it could be, yeah, yeah. They, they get, they started a little bit later than we'd like, you know, they're in school until mid, late June, but we could, it, it could be. Operating costs are, they're pretty flat across from twenty-five and twenty-four. It is beautiful, though, it's just, it's a lot of work. Okay.
All right, moving on to Parks and Recreation.
So for Parks and Rec, we've got three full-time employees, you know, foreman, an assistant, and a laborer. One note, I'm excited that the recreational assets, asset study is complete. They just finished late, late last week, so we're hoping to set up a time where they can remote in and give a summary presentation of the recreational assets. That was Camoyen Associates, the USDA grant from just last year or the year before. So our seasonal, yeah, okay, well, we'll start with brown-tailed moth mitigation, down from twenty-five, that's line fifty-three, I'm sorry. From twenty-five last year to ten this year. I don't know, Counselor Kleepack, if you want to speak to the reasons for that, I think that we'll be, we'll be in decent shape with that budget.
Yeah, I think so too, you know, I think everybody's noticed that they're, they're not gone, there are some around, but they are significantly less, and I think you've also noticed that we have a very, it's been a, a nice wet spring here. Hopefully, and it's projected to stay that way for a while, so I think we're gonna be in pretty good shape this year. This is with the caveat that there will be years when it will come raging back in the city. I hope at that time we'll be willing to reconsider those numbers, because we'll need more when that happens. But I think for right now, we, there's other places to put that resource.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I think ten K will get spent next year. It won't be completely gone from public spaces, but, yeah, I think that should probably cover the, the small amount of work that needs to happen.
So down to maintenance labor costs, full-time salaries and wages is, is pretty flat with the three full-timers. Overtime is also flat. We are proposing to incre- increase line sixty-five, that's the part-time and temporary wages. Those are our seasonals, we hope to hire eight or ten seasonals. Again, it's been difficult to fill those positions. So you'll see, last year's budget was sixty-seven thousand, we're proposing about thirty thousand dollar increase there, that's ninety, bringing us to ninety-six. So, so you understand that number comes from three laborers, again, at twenty dollars an hour for eight months, April through November, and then eight, six to eight seasonal, uh, regular seasonals for, for fourteen weeks. So really, it's not a lot, it's just, it just, it just adds up. We've, we've got to bring people on as early as, you know, mid, mid, late April, and, and we, we've got to keep them through November to, to help with the maintenance. You know, we, we, we do all the maintenance or the mowing and trimming for Waterville Public Schools. It's just a lot with Quarry Road, with Head of Falls, the cemetery, well, the cemetery has a separate budget, but it's just, it's a lot of work. And, 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 you know, it just, it's from May until October that they're mowing and trimming.
So despite the fact that this is a jump, do you feel that that is sufficient to meet your need?
I do, yeah, yeah, I do, if we can fill the positions, Counselor, I, I feel really good about that budget, I'd be super confident, we could probably do, we could do more, yeah.
What's the, what's the, is the challenge finding the person that wants to do the manual labor, is it a wage issue? Like, what is, what are the things can we do to attract people to do this type of work?
Well, these wages that, that I've built in and done, you know, the formulas on, they're, they're up from, say, fourteen or fifteen to sixteen or seventeen dollars an hour, so I'm hoping that does attract, because there are a lot of positions, you know, if you're driving around and looking at the, the billboards or the advertisements, you'll see eighteen dollars plus benefits at a lot of places, so we've got to at least come close to that. So I think it's, it's, I think it may have been our wages before, yeah, being low. Maintenance operating costs, modest increase in electricity, just due to the rate increases from thirteen last year to seventeen, and then also an, an increase in the line just below it, line eighty-two, equipment and vehicle rental, ten last year, fifteen this year. The outdoor pool, of course, we share responsibility with the Alphon Youth Center. And a partnership, I think we're going on four, or probably four, four years now, it's worked very well. Revenues aren't especially high, but we do have a proposal to in- increase rates this year at the pool, but I don't, I don't think that it's a good, good year to do that, but if it's something that folks want to talk about, maybe our, our next city manager, it could be something that we talk about before we get too close to the, the season. So the line nine, number ninety-seven, the actual, the, is it highlighted in yellow on your sheet?
Yeah.
So that was the, that was half of the net revenue from the outdoor pool last year. It was about thirteen thousand dollars that we split fifty-fifty with the Alphon Youth Center.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The, the six thousand six hundred number is half of the net revenue from last year at the outdoor pool.
Okay, the six thousand-
Sixty-six hundred forty-nine.
Six forty-nine, that number, okay.
And our projection for this year is seventy-five hundred, so it's in line ninety-six, but it should have come, it should, it should be in line ninety-seven. I talked to Christina about that, we'll bring it down.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Okay, so in the twenty-twenty-five budget was fifteen thousand?
Right.
And this year is seventy-five hundred?
It's less, yeah, much less.
And, and that's based on?
I think it's based on our subsidy for the outdoor pool.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is it, does it mean there are less people using the pool?
No, no, the numbers are pretty consistent and static, it's because of the subsidy, yeah.
And the subsidy is for Waterville residents?
Yeah.
And also there's a scholarship available, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So the subsidy is forty dollars per, per person resident in the city of Waterville, or eighty dollars per family. It's, it's a great program.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
How, how did the subsidy affect the numbers? Did it affect the numbers?
I think so, yeah, I think that our revenue numbers are down.
No, 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 I mean the numbers of people, the numbers have been flat before?
Yeah, pretty flat, Waterville residents is, you know, in, in the years before we had the subsidy, pretty consistent.
And the, the pool is, I, I, I'm not sure if I went to the pool last year, I'm sorry to say, although my children did, so we did bypasses, but it's not at capacity, anytime I've been there, it, there could be more people.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pool operating costs are up, of course, in a few areas, electricity from eight to twelve, heating also from eight to ten, based on historical and what our expectations are for this year. You'll see the subsidy in line one-ten, twenty-five thousand. Cleaning supplies are, are up, that's line one-twelve, that's chlorine, algicide. And then line number one-thirteen is the pool reserve per the HAF grant. We set aside fifty thousand dollars each year for maintenance of the pool.
Chief Scan, why, why did the electricity go, jump so significantly there? Did we add something new?
No, just rates.
Wow, okay.
No, we didn't add anything, no, in fact, our, our equipment is more efficient than it, than it, than it has been, so. Not a lot of programs. We did keep twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget under line one-twenty-four, and that would be in the event that we were to support a special event or something that community development was, was interested in doing, we would have at least a budget to help with an event or two. Yeah, no staff. Operating costs, there are none except for the recreation program subsidy, which last year was the first year that we implemented that. Again, this is another program that I'm very proud of, and I think that people in Waterville should be proud of. It's twenty thousand dollars that supports youth athletic programs at the Alphon Youth Center, so. They're, they're giving me their, you know, they're updating me with all the, the program participants, and it's been, it's been very successful, so I'm, I'm hoping to keep that in the budget for next year.
I've got a question, how many, how many children does that serve, that subsidy?
Yeah, I could, a, a lot, but I don't, I don't have the number, I don't, I'm not sure how many, yeah.
Which line is that?
Uh, one forty-one.
Ah, right, thank you.
Okay, unless there are questions, we'll just, we'll move on to Quarry Road. Jeff Tucker, our program director, is here, so thanks for coming, Jeff, if there are, you know, detailed questions, he might be helpful. As a whole, the Quarry Road budget, we, we try to budget revenues low and expenses high to be safe. Oftentimes, the budget overall comes in over by twenty to thirty thousand dollars. You know, we're always making strides to, to break even. You know, we're always making strides to, to break even. We haven't gotten there over the last few years. Any shortfall is covered by a capital fund, Quarry Road Capital Fund, where, you know, past revenues are collected and they carry forward each year. That's the model that we've been using over the last several years in terms of, you know, how we cover a gap or a shortfall.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So one, one line, 151, would that include, for example, stuff like the Eastern Cup or the Bill Koch Festival, the fees that we get from, from those? And this year, we, we had a number of bigger events that, like the Bill Koch, we won't expect to have that in the, in the future necessarily, but is, is that why that number, we're at 20,000 when we had projected 15? Cause that, was, was that an 11,000? I don't remember how that went down.
Yeah, it has to do with the bid cycle. It all happens over the summer, so it's really hard to predict. We're, we're putting bids right now for events that are going to be decided in the summer. It's really hard to project out.
I guess the question I, that I'm, I want to think about is, I know that early in the season, there were, we had snow and a lot of places did not, and so there were a number of races that were relocated to Quarry Road. How, how much revenue did that actually bring in for the city?
Well, that's line 151, those are races all the way up until, I guess it would be the end of February, so it doesn't include the Bill Koch.
Doesn't include Bill Koch.
Does not.
That's going to jump up. I'm expecting to track for like 24,000.
Yeah, yeah. The Bill Koch was not the one I was thinking of. I was thinking about like the, the much smaller races that were slated, there was one I remember that was slated to be at Sugarloaf or someplace that, that, that came here. How much does that actually make for the city or is that minimal?
It could be anywhere from like a hundred to like 1,000, like for side races. And that's about what we do in like a really good weekend.
Yeah.
Like ski torrent visits.
Yeah. I, I guess what I'm trying to think about is the advantage of having the, the snowmaking. It is an advantage for the city, but I'm, I'm trying to understand how that is an advantage over the like other facilities in the region or whatever.
Like really, I'm just amazed.
Yeah. Thank you.
I had a, I had a question regards to line 150, Quarry Road Program Director R. I don't know if that was cut off, but can we elaborate on what that is? Cause I don't, I don't know if the, it just says R. I don't know what that means.
Reimbursement?
Okay.
Is what the word was, yep. So there was a grant that we got from three different foundations five or six years ago. It was for, to help fund Jeff's position for three years.
Okay.
We stretched it out to just last year. In fact, I think we, there is a small amount still left, so that's, that's what that line was for.
Okay. Cause I see 16 for last year and there's obviously nothing for, for this year, okay?
Right. So the city, the city's responsible for Jeff's salary now. The, the grant has run out, yeah. Revenue, you know, impressive numbers, I think, for season passes.
Yeah.
Yeah, very impressive.
Incredible.
Numbers and, yeah. Day passes as well, really $20,000, so. Labor costs, 164 through 174. Not a lot has changed. Really, and the same goes for operating costs. There, I don't have anything highlighted here that's, would be, that was alarming to me, if there's something that you have questions about.
I have not any other questions for Parks and Recreation? Thank you very much.
Matt, your team has been doing great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, we are going to kind of jump around just a little bit and go to police before we go to fire.
Here it is.
Just need to get you guys along with the table.
Yeah.
All right, Chief, thanks for joining us. We'll do the same thing as we've, we've been doing. Chief will highlight some of the highs, highs and lows. I know overtime, similar things are probably worth talking about, so I'll hand it over to you.
Sure. So as you see in the department overview, we're very busy with the Police Department and the PSAP. The Police Department responded to over 32,000 calls in 2024, conducted 10 drug search warrants, which as you know, can take months to investigate. We arrested 114 people for OUI and we provide a safe environment, often behind the scenes, for major city events such as the Parade of Lights and Nightmare on Main Street. The PSAP, which I, I use acronyms, but the PSAP is a Public Safety Answering Points, a 911 center, dispatched over 47,000 calls in our nine customer communities, which include Albion, Belgrade, China, Clinton, Oakland, Rome, Sydney, Waterville, and Winslow. Nearly 18,000 of those calls were 911 emergencies. And so the majors and myself, we look at our job to provide you folks with a budget that balances fiscal responsibility with best practice policing that reduces liability for the city. And, and we think we've struck a pretty good balance here with this budget. I'll just note on revenues, you know, first, unfortunately, we're just not set up to take in a lot of revenue at the Police Department. If you look on page 62 of 85, our biggest revenues are line 37, which is MDE, MDEA agent reimbursement. We had a full reimbursement for that officer's pay because he's assigned to MDEA, which is the main Drug Enforcement Administration, and line 43, which is $100,000 out of the opioid settlement revenue, which of course, the city has in large part because of the work the Police Department has done with Operation Hope. So that covers law enforcement revenues. We do have a little better chance for revenue when we get to the comm center. I'm happy to go into that when we get over there. I do believe that it's important to note that roughly 91% of this budget is labor cost and the vast majority of that is controlled by contracts previously approved by this body. So if we look at?
Chief, I'm sorry, just real quick, so, and it was maybe, is this the way you said it? We're not set up for revenue? Are there opportunities for revenue that are there, but we're not capturing because of something else or?
Yeah, no.
There's just not revenues to be had?
There's just not revenues to be had.
Okay, thank you.
Just the way law enforcement, we can't, you know, we can't bill for a response like the Fire Department can, unfortunately. So that's what I meant by not set up, not that we don't have a revenue line, because Christina would make a, a revenue line for us if the opportunity was to be had.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we look at line 51, which is overtime?
Sorry, I was going to say, I, I think what you're saying is that, you know, your mission is not to generate revenue, it's to provide service, yeah?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Sorry if I was unclear on that.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
So overtime remains an issue. We continue to struggle to get a realistic number due to unforeseen issues. This year, for example, we had 61 officer hours spent on a traffic detail on KMD to fix a water issue, which I'm sure you guys are all aware of. We had to have details for quality of life issues in the downtown and the biz, the business district. We had two homicides this fiscal year, as we did last fiscal year, and like I said, multiple drug warrants. And so in addition to that, we've dramatically changed the way we do training at the Police Department in the last two and a half years, particularly sergeants, and so that has made the overtime a little bit of a moving target and I become increasingly concerned when the city has these major events. They're awesome for the city. We all love participating in them. I'm involved in the planning of the Parade of Lights. I think it's great, but as the police chief and the majors back here, it is our responsibility to make sure that those events happen with no critical incidents. And so we do upstaff those, those, and sometimes you'll see six cops there taking pictures with kids, as you did on Nightmare on Main Street, and that's awesome. Those people are serving two purposes. One is they're, they're there to provide protection, two is that they're interacting with the community, but there were other people there that nobody saw that were there to make sure that that was a safe event and the same thing for the Parade of Lights and any other major event that we have in the city. So that does put a little bit of a moving target on overtime, but this year, for the first time, Major Woods has put together a six-page Excel spreadsheet detailing all the projected overtime, plus a rough estimate of the unexpected stuff. Much like Matt, he can't predict a snowstorm and we can't predict a homicide, but to the extent that we can, we believe this will give us the best estimate that we've ever had for this line, and this is something we've been working on for the last two and a half years to really get a handle on this. Look at the numbers we're using, look at what, you know, we're having for these unexpected issues and try to plan for everything that's expected, Counselor.
So what percentage of overtime would you estimate is due to special events or unexpected occurrences that, that's, that's just, that's always going to be there and it should be overtime? And, and how, is there any portion of that total that is due to staffing shortages where people were covering shifts that were, that were empty?
So the staffing shortages, that, that has decreased greatly over, and to answer your first question, I'd be hesitant to put a number on it, cause I wouldn't want to just throw something out there that was inaccurate. The second question I can absolutely answer with some, some level of positivity. The overtime for vacancies has, has really decreased greatly. We're routinely full-staffed or close to it. But at the moment, one of our challenges is we always have to have a supervisor on duty. So if a sergeant, there's four patrol sergeants and one detective sergeant. So if a patrol sergeant takes vacation, and these are our senior people, so they have more weeks of vacation, that costs us about $3,800 a week to fill, times four people, times roughly five weeks of vacation. So the vacation alone costs us a lot of overtime, so, so that's a lot. Plus, as I mentioned, we have started, you know?
But that's baked in. That, that is not, that's not something that has to do with shortages, that's just, that's?
That's, that's baked in, we have to have that.
Yeah.
So then you take the baked in stuff, the unexpected stuff, that's when we start being over expended, and now, as I mentioned, Major Woods has made this six-page Excel spreadsheet that has everything. So all the vacation, all of the training that we're planning on sending people, projected, unexpected stuff, and I think this year, for the first time, we're really starting to get to a point where we've got a handle on that, that overtime number.
Yeah, because like unexpected, I mean, certainly don't want homicides, but it, it unfortunately happens, that, that kind of thing, and then like special events manning and then this vacation situation you're talking about, these, these are things that, that it makes sense, but yeah, just wanting to know what it's costing the city when we can't have enough body, when we're not fully staffed, right? Like what's, what that part?
Yeah.
That is beyond the, the like extenuating circumstance.
That part at this time is very little.
Yeah.
Because, because we're back up to staff and we did, we did lose one person recently. We're going to lose another one here probably in the near future. And, you know, where, when we lose people, it's because they're saying, you know, I'm going to go live out my dream and, you know, go work for here or there, and so that seems to be a little better than the situation we were in a couple of years ago, but the overtime for that has definitely dropped. And so now we're just trying to get a handle on, you know, the stuff that we know, pepper in the stuff that we don't know and that, and we think that we've got it this year. And, and Major Woods spent a lot of time really digging into this and doing research for it this year and, and making that Excel spreadsheet so I could come up here and, you know, sound like I know more or less what I'm talking about.
How many vacancies do you have in the department right now?
We have one right now.
So whatever shift that was on is, so someone's going to have to work overtime to cover that, that shift, correct?
Well, so, so the way we've handled that is a sergeant left, so I promoted a detective to the sergeant position, so there would be no overtime there, and we're holding a detective position open until July 1, which my detective sergeant doesn't think is the best course of action, but it doesn't require overtime to be filled and it's helping us sort of stem the bleeding there on, on the overtime for this year.
So the, I saw the post today for the two, the two anticipated, is that this, these are the positions that you're talking about?
Correct.
The detective sergeant, we're backfilling that, and then you said there was one that was coming?
So we had a patrol sergeant leave?
Yeah.
And then we're expecting that we're going to have one other person leave here in the next couple of weeks. We haven't got the notice yet, but we're, we're expecting that's going to happen.
So that's, we're filling those little positions that we're filling. The one, the one, one sergeant left, we up, sold him, now we got to backfill that one and then the projected one that we haven't got yet.
That's right. And so it takes us a while to get through the process, because we have the polygraph, the psych?
Yeah.
An extensive background check and, you know, physical fitness and, and all of that, so it takes us a while to get people through the process, so that's why we wanted to start it now.
Okay, okay.
And in general, this is a general question, you feel that your team, the morale is, is good on your team right now?
I mean, I, I feel that morale is good right now. You know, Major Woods, who's the patrol commander, spends a fair amount of time actually out there in the patrol division, talking to people, and I think for the most part, we're doing, we're doing pretty well.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Line 43, the use of opioid settling, settling revenue, the $100,000, what does that go for?
So that is, that goes specifically into the budget to offset Todd Stevens' salary? Okay. If you guys are all set, I will move on.
On the point of Todd Stevens, since you mentioned his name, I want to say that I've heard from several independent members of the community that he has been a remarkable addition to the Waterville Police. So we have one here, this was a testimony that I had from the library. I've had others and I'm, I'm so pleased that we have that resource here right now.
Yeah, we were very fortunate to get him back. He worked for us as a midnight team member previously for Crisis and Counseling. He wrote along and he was actually employed by Crisis and Counseling. And so very, very fortunate to get Todd back when the Community Outreach Coordinator position opened up and, you know, we hear the same thing that you do from community members, that he's doing a great job, he's a great asset to the community, so we're very fortunate to have him.
Yeah, I think him and Rob both are, do great, great work, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Rob's out there. Rob, another, Rob's an example of somebody that really cares about what he's doing and, and you can't pretend that, so.
Yeah.
Very good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, I do want to note, just back on line 50, I did say that most of that is contractual increases. We are asking for two corporals this year. It's not a net increase of staff, it would just be promoting two patrol officers to corporal, and the reason that we want to do that, there's two reasons actually. One is it will relieve overtime on supervisors. We had one supervisor that worked November this year. He just worked November, he didn't have a day off. And if we had corporals, then we, that would be the supervisor to step in and work, and not only would it save us overtime, it saves stress on that supervisor that didn't get a day off to spend time with his family, and it is one of the few outlined goals by the IACP study that we have yet to achieve. So we're trying to incrementally get up to where we would have five corporals, but we're asking for two this year.
No, the addition of the corporals positions would obviously increase their wage. Is that included in, into this?
That's included in this, yeah. It, it will increase the two patrol officers' wages and then it moves the sergeant wages because obviously you can't have the?
Totally.
The corporal, you, you know how that works.
You.
So, so yeah, that's, that's about $51,000 for two corporals, and that's everything included, moving the sergeants and moving the patrol. And that's everything included, moving the sergeants and moving the patrol officers' pay up.
Do they continue to do patrol work?
Correct.
So I'm a patrolman, now I'm out driving, doing, fighting crime. I get promoted to corporal. I have that title, I'm still out fighting crime?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And then when the sergeant isn't there, there's, there's a couple of times when that would be very useful for us. One, we have one of those unpredictable incidents, and now the sergeant is managing that incident, which is taking all of his time. You have a corporal on shift, now the corporal can manage the city. If, if we don't have a corporal on shift, we have to have another sergeant come in to manage the city while that sergeant manages the critical incident that's going on. So that reduces it in that sense. But in the other sense, when the sergeant takes time off, the corporal can fill in for the sergeant.
All right. Just to be clear, the positions that we're backfilling aren't because we're promoting two corp, two folks to corporal. Correct?
Correct. Yeah, no, yeah, no, we're not adding any positions.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're adding a level of responsibility?
Correct.
Okay, for two people.
So we're not, it's not, it's not a net gain of staff, it is just adding responsibility to two people.
Okay.
And it's to offset the, so the sergeants can, because you, you mentioned that, that one sergeant worked the entire month of November, and having these two corporals would alleviate that so that, you know, they could.
Yeah, so I, I would say, you know, when you, when you ask about morale, the one, the one morale issue that I could quickly identify is, you know, the sergeant that has to work November, we can't promote sergeants right now for that reason. And we've had people come to us and tell us, if there were corporals, I would be interested in the sergeant position. But I'm not interested in it right now because of all of the overtime. And so by having the corporals, that would relieve some of the pressure on the overtime. And then we have folks that are interested in sergeant's position as they become, as they become open and available.
So if I'm a sergeant and I want to become a corporal.
You wouldn't, because that would be a demotion.
Okay, sorry.
You've got to become a corporal to become a sergeant.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of the, the progression here, but to rise up a level, is there more training involved?
So, and that's, that's one of the other nice things about having corporals, is because now we're developing our lower-level staff to be ready to become these mid-level managers. And then, you know, one of the things that we actually did very early on is now every position, when you get promoted to a position, there's a training outline, you know, that was made by our training sergeant. And he looked at it and said, if you make sergeant, here's the minimum of what you need for training. One, two, three. And so patrol officers, obviously, when we hire them, they have a minimum. And if they express an interest in being a detective, then we, you know, guide their training in that direction. If they express an interest in moving up through command, we guide their training in that direction. And then when they hit command, you know, they need to have leadership training. And so by having these corporals, we'll have people that are ready to go into the sergeant's positions, which will also be helpful.
So it's between patrol and sergeant?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you maybe estimate the offset of that 51K that would be saved potentially in the overtime line?
My personal opinion is that I think it's going to pay for itself.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
There, there are some union issues there, so like, if a sergeant, I can't take sergeant's work away from the sergeant. So if they wanted the overtime, they're going to get first refusal on it. But if you take November, for example, I guarantee you that that sergeant is not going to want to work the entire month. So I think that it'll pay for itself, but we're going to have to see that first year to really be sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. All right. So what I did to try to point out the major increases here is I went down through the budget, and I'll just highlight lines where there are big increases. And if, if you folks want to stop me or have any questions, please feel free to do so.
This is, we're in communications center now?
Actually, I have not made it to communications yet. I'm still on page 62.
Thank you.
Line 64 of page 62, that's another contractual increase. And it's really not that they're getting a lot more, it's just that uniforms and boots and everything costs a lot more than they used to. And we have 33 sworn officers, so, you know, that looks like a pretty big increase. But really, it's just to get them the basic things that they need. I'm then going to page 63.
Just go to line. We're a couple, we're two pages behind you.
Right on the lines.
All right, gotcha. So line 79, we combined line 79 with line 100 this year. And this is equipment, vehicle lease and rentals. And you'll remember, well, some of you will remember, a few years ago, we went to a lease program. And so this year, that $160,000 will allow us to trade in a 12-year-old vehicle that is rusting and get a new unmarked, that's an unmarked vehicle, as well as two new marked cruisers. And it's all part of keeping with the plan to update the fleet. And again, this is another one of those IACP recommendations that we got a couple of years ago. And I know you weren't here, so IACP is the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And right around the time that I took over as chief, we had a study done by them to talk about best practices that we could do at the police department. So this was one of the recommendations by them, is to get the fleet under control and have a fleet maintenance plan. And of course, leasing with Enterprise gives us just the ability to do that. I would note that the lease program, as we promised, still continues to allow us to do more with less, because those three cars this year would cost us over $180,000 to buy and outfit them. And this 160 that we're asking for covers these three and all of our previous leases that we have. And then obviously, when the leases start coming up, we've been told that Enterprise around the country is selling or trading these cars in for 108% of their value, which is much, much better than what we were getting on the cars that we were trading in in the past.
How many, how many cars on the fleet right now?
There's 22 cars on the fleet right now.
How many of that is through Enterprise?
So I have to double-check that, because I don't know that off the top of my head. Almost all of them at this point. Do you know what that means? So 13.
And so, because I remember when, you know, when it was proposed to the city council, and I remember voting on it. How is it working? So, I mean, would you consider it a success? Is it something that you want to continue with? It's obviously, you know, bearing, bearing fruit and doing what its, you know, intended purpose was for.
Yeah, I think it's successful. One of the biggest things for me is, the recommendation was to have a fleet maintenance plan. And so Enterprise tracks all of the maintenance that we do on those vehicles. Every vehicle has a little card, so when you go in, whether it's at a local participating garage or PW, it's all tracked. That gets punched into the VIN number, and they know what has been done to those cars, which again, helps us know which cars are nickel and diming us and which cars aren't. So I personally think that it's been a great success, and, and you know, once again, we're doing more with less by having that program. So I think it's a success.
What about the cars that are not from Enterprise? Are those that you've had in the past, like, those must be?
They're getting tired.
Getting up there.
For sure. Yeah, and so we're, we're working on phasing those out right now. The ones that we have this year, the trade-in value is just not worth it. It's better to keep them as a spare car.
I got you.
Because unfortunately, sometimes we get into accidents, or we have engine trouble or whatever, and we still need cars for cops to drive, so.
Yep.
But yeah, absolutely, having the Enterprise cars, keeping them in good shape, and having the ability to track all of that in a program that somebody else does for us is great.
So you, you get the cars from Enterprise, and, you know, with the police package, do you, does, I mean, you have to send that elsewhere to get outfitted, I would assume.
So the cars coming from Enterprise, the police cars come outfitted.
They, they are coming from Enterprise already, ready to roll?
That's correct. Yes. When we lease, when we lease an unmarked car, we do that ourselves, because we're not putting any holes or anything like that in them. We're putting, you know, we're using a different method to mount the lights and stuff, but.
It's, it's wild.
I mean, it's not, it's not free.
No.
You know, we pay for it.
For sure.
But it's, it comes to us, ready to go.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Okay, if you guys are ready, I will move along. Make sure I didn't skip anything here. Okay. Line 81, this is facility rental, and it's a reduction, and that's because of the capital purchase that you guys approved for us last year. And we were able to get Connex boxes, which are now down at the range, so we no longer need to rent a storage unit at what it used to be, it used to be Arbo's, but now we no longer need to rent that. Line 83, we combined, if you look at line 83, it's Vehicle Equipment and Maintenance, we combined line 90 with that this year, which was tires and lube. So the increase on line 83 is combining tires and lube and inflating on, on what it costs to fix things. Line 85, that is facility range maintenance, and that has quite a jump. And the reason that that has a jump is because we still have work at the police range that needs to be done, that's required by the Department of Environmental Protection. We were going to have Public Works do that because it's much cheaper, but they have no shortage of other things to be doing. And so talking with the city engineer, we decided it would be best to, under his supervision, try to put that work out and, and get the work done by a local contractor. Line 89, this is the good news. This is the gas, so we're going to be able to reduce that gas line from $67,000 to $42,200. And that's due to the contract that Matt just got for, for gas at $2.11.
So, I'm sorry, $67,000 to?
$42,200.
Where, that's line 89?
That is line 89, yes.
So that'll be updated in?
Oh, oh, I see. It's, yeah, okay. Great.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. Twenty-five grand.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, that's great.
Line 94, the increase to armory and weapons is to continue equipping our situational use-of-force program. So basically, that's simunitions rounds, force-on-force training for the police officers. So that is pretty straightforward. And then that is it on the police side. That brings us to animal control. There is, there's nothing too significant on the animal control side, except that if you look at line 119, the Humane Society increased by 25.5%. We did a lot of research on this, we did a lot of negotiating with them. There were no other contracts available to us, and we are statutorily required to contract with a Humane Society. So we did the best we could to negotiate with them, but at the end of the day, that's the, that's the price that, that we have to pay. Moving on to the comm center, so now I am at line 123 and 124, comm center users fee and PSAP users fee. So that is, that's what we charge our customer communities for dispatch and PSAP services. We actually went up, or we're projecting to go up 5% this year. You see the percent change is at 2.9%, and that's because we are routing the capital expenses that they all pay off to the comm center capital account. So in their, in their contracts, all of our customer communities pay a 2% capital fee. And that is so that we can replace equipment in the comm center and make sure that everything's still running in there. If we have some equipment failure, we would come to you and ask for permission to use that capital fund. So that's why that only shows 2.9%. And, and so really, there's a $26,410 increase there, but just there's a portion of it that's going to the capital account.
I'm sorry, I was trying to like, follow you as closely as I could. I've been going since 6:00 AM. That increase in revenue is due to volume, or rate, or some other thing there?
So.
It's a flat?
The increase in revenue is that we are going up 5% on the customer communities.
Oh, it is the fee, so we're pushing the fee, not the volume.
Correct, yes. The reason, the reason that it only shows as 2.9% is because that, the rest of that is going to a capital account, so in case anything breaks, we can fix it.
I got you, yeah.
Is that new?
That has been in.
The, the 2% piece?
Yeah, Christina has marked it on the budget this year, so you guys can better see it and track it.
No, 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 I'm saying, like, of the, of the percentages that we collect now, is the, is a 2% to the capital, is that new, or is that, did that start with the PSAP?
That actually started before the PSAP.
Or the comm center?
That started under my predecessor with the comm center.
Okay.
It was actually recommended by Steve Daley to have a 1% return on investment and a 2% capital fee.
So I guess why, if we're going to increase by 5%, we're already accounting for the 2%. Why is it 2.9% and not the full 5%?
That.
Huh?
Well, because if you were going to go up the full 5%, then that would be 7% for the, the customer communities. And we try to be as fiscally responsible as we can for the city without breaking the bank of our neighbors that we're providing services for.
Can I, can I comment?
Okay.
Maybe I can clarify?
Thank you.
If you notice where he put his request in, down at the bottom, it has a bracket of the negative 11.
Okay.
So my numbers are lower than his, is what he's saying. So if I had carried his all the way across and didn't reflect the journal going out when the contracts are paid to the reserve, it would say 5%. But because I lowered my numbers by the 11,000, the true revenue going into general fund as the offset is the number that I put there at the 2.9.
Okay.
And the 11,092 is what gets by contract, is supposed to be held in the replacement account for equipment breakdowns.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So line 127, you'll notice that the comm center is, the total comm center cost is actually down. And this is because we were unable to fill the part-time positions that we budgeted for, and so we're cutting $100,000 from the budget there. We do have one part-timer, so we're, we are leaving $10,000 there for that. Line 146, which is on my next page, but may not be on your next page.
Chief?
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Are you saying that you're projecting, that you're not planning to hire that person, or?
Correct.
So, okay.
So we, we have been, it was, it was five part-time positions that we budgeted for. We have one part-time dispatcher right now, who's a city employee in the fire department. We're not able to fill those positions. We did have people that were interested, but they never worked. And so we have been doing fine in the comm center with what we have, and so we decided it was prudent to cut that $100,000 out of the budget.
Okay. So you're reducing a position?
Well, it's reducing four part-time positions. Because that's what it, so it was, we, we were budgeted for five part-time dispatchers. We have one part-time dispatcher. So we're cutting that $100,000, which is four.
Four.
Part-time.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
So line 146, dues and membership is going up due to keeping the 10 dispatchers, their membership with the National Emergency Number Association. The benefit there is that it allows them continuing education that they can do right online. And then finally, line 153, which is increasing travel expense, excuse me, we were, we were not adequately budgeting for the dispatchers to travel to training, and so we're just making that correction there so that they can travel to training. So just, if you don't have any questions on that. So just, if you don't have any questions on that, just to kind of bring it to a close and summarize, if you look at line 26 on the front page, we're asking only for, when you take the gas out of that, we're asking only for a $39,500 increase in the operational budget. You know, so I think that that's keeping, that's keeping it just about as flat as we can. We made $65,400 in cuts to our original request. We had originally requested five corporals. The heating that you guys approved to come out of the forfeiture, we had originally put in this budget, but it was emergent and needed to happen sooner, so we took that out. And we were going to paint the inside of the building this year, and we took that out. So those three things amounted to the $65,000 in cuts. Labor costs are up 8.7%, but this is largely contractual. And one of the things that I think is important to note, we can't increase their pay without increasing the overtime, because there is a, there is an effect where it's time and a half. So overall, we think this is a fiscally responsible budget that will allow us to deliver professional police services to the city, and that's our mission. Yes?
Beautiful. Thank you.
Sure.
Thinking about those, your story about the corporals, that was $51,000 for the addition, the promotion of, of, the creation of those two positions, or however the correct way to say that is. And you had $69,000 originally in the budget for what would have been five corporals and painting and the fuel oil. So what would it cost if we, of that $69,000, would that be another $50,000 to put three corporals back in there? I'm just trying to understand that. So, you know, is it, does it get cheaper to add corporals, or how does that work?
It does, it does get cheaper to add corporals. I, I'm not sure that I have that page with me. I think five corporals was $101,000, is that right, Christina? Five corporals was $101,000. So it would be another $50,000 to get all five.
And so a question then is, I imagine that we'll see the creation of those additional corporals at some point in future years, maybe next year or the year after or whenever.
That would be my goal.
Yep. Yeah. And is it still, if we were to wait another year, is it still, would it only still be inflation and all that kind of thing aside, would it still only be 50 grand for the additional three corporals? Or if we wait, does, is there some, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to go up no matter what happens, because they get contractual raises every year. So if we, if we promote them, it's gonna go up. If we don't promote them, it's gonna go up. Either, either way, it's gonna go up. But I believe the total to get five corporals this year would have been another $50,000 on top of what we asked for. It doesn't, it doesn't exactly divide out to, if, if you did five divided by the total number because of raising the sergeant's salary, because we had to move sergeants that were at the bottom step up a step, because the corporals are gonna make what used to be the bottom step sergeant.
Yeah, okay. And so it doesn't, it's not, I'm not suggesting that we add three more corporals into this budget here, but I'm just trying to understand whether it, if we had had the capacity, if it would have been an opportunity missed to not do it now as opposed to doing it later, a cost that we would be further incurring in the next year. You follow what I'm saying?
I am following what you're saying. I, I do think it's an opportunity missed. That's, that's the truth. I think, you know, last year, we asked for five corporals and we didn't get any. This year, we asked for five corporals and we got two, which is gonna be great. You know, it, no matter what happens, it's gonna cost more next year because of the contractual increases.
Sure, yeah, no, I understand that part of it.
Yeah.
Does it, how does it impact the overtime calculations?
So the more corporals you have, presumably, the less sergeant overtime you're going to have. So what we would do right now, because there's, we're obviously there during the day, there's a patrol sergeant there during the day, so the two corporals, we're planning putting on night shift, because there's less supervision on night shift than there is on day shift. Obviously, if we had two corporals that we could put on day shift, that would reduce overtime on filling sergeants if they went on vacation on day shift.
I see. Okay.
You had mentioned that you had cut the painting costs for the inside as well. Do you know how much that would have cost?
The, the painting was very minimal. It was, it was a couple thousand dollars, somewhere between two and five.
Yeah, that, that's what I had, I'd kind of assumed. And, and you just saved 25 on, $25,000 on the gas, right? On the gas purchase? So, I mean, I don't know if 2,000's gonna make that much of a difference to add back in, but it might get you some new paint on the inside, so.
Right.
We did save money.
So just back to this corporal thing that Council Kepec started. So a 50,000 increase in cost, but there's, would be a reduction in the overtime. So is that, is that the, is 50,000 the net number after the reduction, or if we?
No.
Yeah, no, right, no, so you're right, you're right, you get what I'm asking, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I asked him earlier.
Yeah. So there would be a reduction in the overtime, which would offset the cost of, potentially of the increase?
Correct. I, I think it's gonna pay for itself. What I don't know, and why I'm hesitant to throw our number there, is if a sergeant wants to take that overtime, a sergeant is going to have first dibs on that because of the union. And so it's not automatically sergeant one takes vacation, corporal one fills that. Another sergeant would have the opportunity by seniority to fill that shift before the corporal. So that's why it doesn't translate to straight savings.
Got you. Yeah, you know, I got, I got you. Yeah, thank you, thank you. All right.
I think the other point is that you're adding three new people, which they all have, you know, benefits, and probably at the end of the day, no?
Promoting three people.
Yeah, yeah, they're not adding.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, so there's no net gain. We're just making, in this case, two patrol officers, corporals. And if we added the three more, it's, three more patrol officers would be corporals, so So, so what the major was saying is, is there, there are still patrol officers, and like, to your point earlier, Mayor, there are still patrol officers, and I think it was you, maybe it was you, Councilor, but they're just gonna have the additional responsibilities of being supervisors at those times when it's needed.
Okay. Thank you, yeah.
It would be overtime, right? So there's only so many, sorry? So they're, they're essentially just part-time supervisors.
Got you.
Right, yeah. I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to picture, if, if we have more and more corporals, then we have fewer and fewer patrol officers too, right? So.
Well, yes, except that they're still gonna be out answering calls.
Yeah, sure.
Answering patrol-type issues. They're just gonna be that supervisory capacity when we need them to be.
Right.
And frankly, even, even now, when it gets busy, the sergeants go out and answer calls, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So more training, higher pay.
Yeah, absolutely, Councilor.
More responsibility.
Right.
Okay.
It's grooming them?
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to see what the savings actually are.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I agree.
But I just wanted to understand the dynamic of that, that the numbers didn't make sense at first.
Chief Frost, good evening, sir.
Hello, hello. All right. Welcome, chief. So, Fire Department, you've received a revised version. There is also another proposal that the chief's gonna talk a little bit about, obviously dealing with our EMS and potentially adding two more per shift to deal with the situation within the hospital. So I think first, we'll just go through the, the regular budget, chief, go through some of the highs and lows.
Yeah.
And then maybe talk about that other proposal, and just what your forecast for the department. And we had a good meeting today, I think, that gave us a little bit more info, but it needs to be prepared for the future is the bottom line.
Yeah, and we have, actually, before we came here, I think we have two more set up in the next two weeks, as things continue to, continue to present themselves. So we're, we're, this is, this is what we've been dealing with for, for two straight weeks. So we're trying awful hard to figure it out. First and foremost, thank you very much for letting me sit here tonight in front of you. And I would love to just take an opportunity to, I would just like to thank the staff, my staff at the Fire Department. Every day I go to work, I'm just kind of in awe of the sheer volume of calls that these folks are encountering every day. And they, they just go and they do it. And it's, it's a massive amount, and we can talk about that here in a little bit when we talk about the proposal. So, start off with the budget here. Revenues in the fire protection side. The revenues are gonna look exactly the same. We look like we're gonna hit all of those targets on the Fire Department side, so we kept everything the same there. Fire protection labor cost, obviously, full-time salaries and wages, that is per contract. You can see in line 38, which is overtime, that is up almost a little over $42,000. Looking back through the last couple years of actuals, we have been well over our, our budget, which obviously takes from other parts of our budget. And to look at our overtime, I've been trying to pick it apart the best I can, there's a couple big, obviously, pay increase means overtime increase, so we have a, a pay increase this year, so we will see an overtime increase. But looking at our overtime, one of our big issues that we have is we are an eight-man shift, and our minimum is seven-man. So every, almost every single shift, somebody is on vacation. If you look at the way that we run and the amount of vacations that we have in our department, we're almost at seven-man minimum every single day that a shift comes to work. Meaning if somebody's out sick, if somebody wants to go to training, it has to be backfilled almost every day. So we do, we do accrue quite a bit of overtime because of that. But we have to, we can't go any lower than a seven-man minimum, when I'm trying to staff two ambulances, a couple fire trucks, and somebody in command. So seven-man is, is literally the minimum we could go to.
So throughout the shift, you want to, like, eight, eight people on?
We have eight people per shift right now.
And one of those is always on, on overtime shift?
No, not always, no. We can go down to a seven-man minimum.
Right.
But if you look at the way that we're operating right now, we have a lot of vacation time in the department. So we are always at seven-man minimum. So if somebody calls out sick, like today, we'd have to cover it with overtime. And we have had a lot of sick time this year, or sick outs.
Say, for instance, one of your, like, command staff calls out, I mean, that would, I would assume be more difficult to cover, since it's more of a leadership position.
Yeah, so we have a battalion chief and a captain on each shift. So if the battalion chief calls out or is not available that day, the captain will step up into his role. If the captain is out sick, we obviously, we have our battalion chief there. We only allow one person on vacation at a time, so those two guys would never be out at the same time unless one of them calls in, out sick while the other one is out. So we usually always have one command staff there every day.
All right. So, again, I, I know you're not suggesting this, or, nor am I, but just to understand the numbers a little bit.
Yep.
You know, we have, we have $42,000 increase in, in overtime. You know, 100 and, you know, the actuals is 205,000 in 2024.
Mm-hmm.
If we were to add a body, create another position.
Mm-hmm.
If we were to add a body, of that, let's just look at 2024, use that number for, or we'll just use this number, 157, this year.
Hmm.
Of the, that 157, how much would that number go down by add? So I'm imagining some of the overtime are for unforeseen events or special thing, I don't know, like.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah. We have callbacks, large fires, we have callbacks.
Yeah.
I mean, lately, if all of our ambulances are out, we try to call back, because we have to cover, try to cover the city the best that we can. So we have a driver's tone that goes out, and full-time personnel, we ask them if they're available, they can come back to the station, which is very common in most departments. It's just in the, in the event of we're trying to cover the city for another emergency.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm asking, what would the net cost to the city be if we, you know, added a position, given the savings that we might expect in overtime? What would that net cost be to the city?
I would, I would have to dig into that. So if we were, if you mean if we were at nine-man shifts? I mean, I could tell you what it's gonna be for, if we were.
But you just said that we're like, you, you not, you call them nine-man shifts, but in reality, we're running at seven-man shifts. So even if you're running a nine-man, it seems like you would be at, with the, the vacation that you have, we'd actually be running in a practical way.
At eight.
Eight, yeah.
Yeah.
And so that, that's what I'm getting at. What is, what would the, the savings that we would get in overtime versus the cost of adding another body? That would be, that, that cost would be what we are buying the ability to have actually fully-staffed eight-person shifts for.
Yep.
Does that make sense, or am I thinking about this wrong?
No, 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 I, I understand what you're saying. It, it's hard to, it would be hard to understand that unless I sat down and looked at it, but I mean, let's, if you look at what a person costs after, and we, and we look at the top of the pay scale, because I don't know what's coming in, right? It's like almost $109,000 per person to bring somebody in. So we'd have to cut some significant overtime if I added one person per shift.
Sure, 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 yeah. So.
I mean, I'm sure if you, if we had nine men and you went down to a seven-man minimum, you know, so two people could be out at a time, then, you know, you could say that you would potentially cut overtime, yes. How much? It's hard to say. I could definitely dig into that and take a look at it some more.
So you're saying like, for one, for one hire, is 109 in total, 109,000?
About 109,000 per person, correct? Is that what we figured out?
You know, it's not 157, so.
Your.
I mean.
But you're always gonna have overtime.
It's about.
I think you're around 75.
With wages and benefits at the top of the pay scale, I think it's close to 109.
It would reduce the sum of the overtime.
Right. And if, and if you find yourself, like, your department in like a shortfall of people working, and say, for instance, some areas go, what is the, like, what's the relationship with Delta in regards to covering any, any part of the city?
I mean, we, we have called Delta. It's very rare. One, so just take one weekend, I know we called Delta one weekend twice, because we were, we ran 30 calls in one day. One time, Delta was able to come, the other one, they were not. They were not available. And as, as this EMS, and I'm going to call it a crisis, continues around us right now, our ability to rely on our partners around us is going to be very hard, because they're in the same boat that we are.
So you're saying Delta, like, overall mutual aid, Winslow, Fairfield, Oakland, mutual aid in other communities?
As far as EMS goes, we do not have a mutual aid agreement for EMS.
Okay.
We have a mutual aid agreement for fire, yes.
Right, not EMS, okay.
Yeah. And the reason for, it's hard for mutual aid for EMS is because Delta charges per capita to other cities, and it's hard to make a mutual aid agreement if they're making money, and we would not be.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I'll, I'll talk to you perhaps another time. I don't wanna belabor this. And, and I, I think it's, you know, it's an interesting exercise, but I also feel that we, we simply can't be talking about adding positions at this point.
Sure, I understand that. I, I prefaced it by saying I wasn't suggesting it, but I wanted to understand what the economics of that actually were, right? So it's not, it wouldn't be a cost of 109,000, it would be something less than that. And what we could offset that with in the reduction to overtime, that, the, the net total that it would cost to add that position, that is the cost that the city would be paying to be able to have fully eight-person-staffed EMS teams.
But, yeah.
See, but less than 109.
It's not, right.
Am I wrong? Am I, you would need one person for each shift though, right? Like no, you can't add one person-
No, you'd have to have four.
Correct. So it's 109 times four.
And that's not going to offset 157,000 in overtime, so.
Thank you.
But you know, I mean, we, you know, in other departments that I, or another department that I worked at, we have tried to offset overtime costs because we needed more people. And I'm right up front, honestly, the overtime cost slid up with everything else. So we didn't see the savings that we hoped we would see. In relation to the amount of overtime per person, we did see a downwards, a downward slide a little bit, but it didn't, it didn't outweigh that cost.
Well, on the other side of it too, I would, I would wonder how valuable an opportunity it is to some of your team members to be able to access that overtime. I mean-
Yeah. You know, overtime in any, obviously any place a big deal. We've never, our folks do a wonderful job covering what they need to. We, I, since I've been there, I think maybe we forced one, somebody into work maybe once, which is something we try not to do ever, because I don't want to force somebody into work if they don't, if we don't have to. The crews do a wonderful job of covering. But, you know, it comes, it comes at a cost. And the more people you have, obviously, you know, we, so just take our paramedics, for example, they need 120 hours of training every two years just to re-up their license. Well, we've tried to do that training on shift, but when you run 15 to 20 calls a day, it's impossible. And they can't pass their classes. So we have to send them outside of shift to go make sure that they get their training. Because, you know, they're hopefully important to what we do in the city of Waterville. So, but I love the idea because I've been trying to look at how are we going to cut this overtime budget, right? Like it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And if you come up with a better way, let's keep working on it. I mean, that's what we're here for, right? That's what we're here for. And like I said, we have had an increased number of callbacks, just because when that second ambulance rolls out the door, I do not want to leave the city of Waterville uncovered. That is not my plan. We cannot rely on other departments to cover our EMS calls. So we, we will try to call back and get somebody come in and run our ambulance for us. You'll also see at times, not that, you know, that we should be doing this, but you know, my EMS deputy chief, he's in the back of an ambulance an awful lot trying to help make it work. So we do the best that we can for sure. Any more questions about the OT? All right. The next increase worth talking about, obviously there's an increase in holiday pay. Line 41, other premiums is a $1,000 increase. So other premiums are stipends for fire inspector, fire investigator, maintenance overseer, municipal fire alarms. And I did add a couple more of those this year on my department, just because the municipal fire alarm system is getting so big. And also the wellness visit incentives, which is new to the contract this year. So that, up that. Line 42, part-time and temporary, temporary wages, this is our call force payroll. And then in line 52, there is a decrease of 10,400 in the clothing and cash allowance, but really it's not a decrease. It just got moved to line 80. And the reason for this, and Christina may be able to say this a little bit, but I'm going to try. This is a labor cost because in the union contract, they get $650 a year to buy uniforms, but they are allowed to take $250 a year out in cash, and that is taxable. So we had to leave the 250 in there and then put this, the rest of it into the line 80. And you'll see that when we get there. Did I get that correct?
Yes, you did very well.
All right. Trying awful hard here. All right. Any questions there? Okay, fire protection operation costs, line 56, our $400 increase for dues and memberships, 60, little bit of increase in cell phones. And when it's cell phones, it's really internet service. All of our ambulances and our trucks have iPads in them because we got to do patient calls and patient stuff and do our, do our run reports right on scene. Line 62, water and sewer increase. That was just the increase that we were handed down from, for water and sewer. Line 63, hydrant increase, that was 18,759. That's contractual. That one hurts.
That's the same thing though, is the water increases.
Yeah, that's the water. As water increases, our hydrant rentals increase the same amount. So electricity, that's our $2,400 increase, same thing. Heating fuel, that's for natural gas. That is an increase over last year, and that was what they're telling us it's going to be. Equipment maintenance on line 67, I increased that by 500, just a small increase. That takes care of all of our small equipment that we have in the station, and that adds up fast. Line 69, fire alarm maintenance. We talked about this at length. We did put a $5,000 increase in there. The city's AES wireless system, as we talked about last time, is growing immensely. And we need to be able to take care of this to make sure that it's working properly. Line 70, vehicle maintenance, 5,000. I really wanted to add more in there, but I'm trying to be responsible. These, these vehicles, these big trucks, man, they take, they take a ton of money to take care of them. I mean, we had to replace the tires on the tower this year, just the front drive tires. And my lord, I want to say they were $4,000 apiece. They're just massive. So, and they do not last. I mean, that truck is only a couple of years old, and all of a sudden the drive tire is going to be replaced. And we know it doesn't put a ton of mileage on it. It's just, it's, it's amazing how expensive this stuff is. Mileage was a small increase.
Whoa, 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 hold on.
Whoops, sorry.
We got to go to aerial firefighter. What is that? Because that, we didn't have that before. And that, just because it's a cool name, I just want to know what it is.
Oh, that's the ARF truck.
Oh, okay. The, the, okay.
The big, the big truck up at the airport, that's for the ARF truck. Yep. That thing's a beast and takes a lot to keep it on the road. But that's a heck of a truck. And, you know, shout out to Randy and his crew at the airport, man, they are amazing. And our truck that's up there getting painted right now, once I get it back, I'll send you guys pictures. It's looking pretty awesome.
Yeah.
He's doing a heck-
I was up there a couple of weeks ago. Doesn't look awesome now, but I can tell the work, the work that's been done. It's all, it's all on like saws and like things like that, like saw hoaxes.
It's getting there though, and you know-
Yeah, yeah. He's doing amazing work.
Thank goodness for what those guys are doing. You know, hopefully that'll save that truck for us a couple of years. That's a big deal.
I want to know what you were imagining, like a drone firefighter thing?
No, I shouldn't know if that was a cool program. I'm like, this is kind of neat. I want to see what this, what this is all about. Like, I was like, I saw that when I was looking over the budget. I'm like, I can't wait to ask this question. And then you just skipped over it. And I'm like, no, 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 no.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Line 80, the clothing uniform purchase. You'll see that that's where that money got put into for their, their clothing allowance. Line 81, cleaning spies went up a little bit. And line 83, books and subscriptions went up a little bit. It looks like this year, the state's going to be moving to the 2024 life safety code. We're going to need to purchase code books. So they had to up that a little bit. Any question on the fire side of the house?
Jason, did you have a chance to redo your fuel account?
I actually did not. So that should be hopefully going down, correct?
And that's 78?
Line 78, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll get, I'll get that, get that moved around.
Just out of curiosity, why is that one in red?
I put it in red for my own purpose because I didn't know what to do with it. So I just put it where it was last year. Because at the time when I made this, I didn't know where the, where we landed yet. So, and I haven't had a chance to redo it.
Okay.
So I did that for myself, sorry. Okay, EMS side. EMS revenue, that is a decrease of 86,000. So we have been monitoring this weekly. And thank goodness for the billing company that we have right now. They do an amazing job. And they send us weekly updates, daily updates if we want. Right now, as of, just of last week, our revenue per trip is up by $37. So every time that we're getting paid, we're looking at, making around $438. So that's up. The billable trips though are down, meaning the trips that they can actually bill for have gone down slightly. Our expected revenue, it was hanging right around 1.57 for the year, 1.57 million for the year. We just had two really, really busy months. We look like we're going to be about 1.63 million for the year. So we have ticked up. And we've, we've hit a heck of a patch here where we're just busier than can be. So it may keep going up, but it's something that we definitely keep an eye on every day.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
And will it anticipate going, especially with the hospital closure going down to Augusta?
Well, that's something that we can talk about in the next, but possibly. We've been running numbers like crazy, a lot of hypotheticals, hypothetical numbers. But if we were to run to Augusta, one-third of what we do now, or if one-third of our calls that go to inland, or 300 of them, because we run about 900 calls inland a year, we could see a potential increase in revenue. But that revenue is in, offset by the amount of fuel, the amount of wear and tear and maintenance on the vehicle. So, but yes, we could see an increase there for sure. So I did put that back down to 1.6. We had a massive year in 2024, which was wonderful. Our actuals in 2023 was 1.61. We just, we don't have a lot of analytical data to look at. But, you know, most EMS services have been around for years and can look, and they have a pretty good handle. We are, we're trying to figure this one out. So going by what our, what our company that does our billing is looking at, they said 1.6 is a pretty good number that we should be looking at to try to make every year with our trips that we're running right now. Could that increase? Absolutely it could. But for most of the year this year, we weren't going to hit 1.6 at all. So it's a, it's a game that's hard to figure out. So I did put that back down to 1.6. EMS labor costs, line 100, that shows our contractual increase. Line 101, same thing. I increased that the same amount by 42,626. And you can see our actuals for the last few years, that's about where we should land, I guess, is what I'm looking at. So we're going to give that a shot there. And for the same exact reasons, you know, we talked about EMS side of the house, fire side of the house. I mean, we're all firefighter EMTs. So we're kind of all mixed together, but we split the budget so we can see what's going on with it. Let's see, 104, other premiums. Okay, so you see a big increase here. So this is driven by the contract and the wellness visit incentives that we now have in our contract. On the fire side of the house, it didn't look as big. On this side, there was never any incentives on this side of the house. So you can see that it had to come up. What that does is that covers our folks to go seek mental health facilities or go seek psychiatrists if they want. And we're going to help them get there because we believe that that's extremely important. Mental health is a big deal, and we need to take care of that. I need my people to be around for 25 years and be healthy, so that they can retire healthy. And then you'll also see the same thing here. Line 113, the clothing allowance. The two, it's the same thing on the fire side. The 250 needs to stay in there because they can take that out per cash, and that's taxed. So that went down, but then it's added back into the clothing and purchase allowance on the other side. That's what we got. Fire away.
Did you want to just give it to them to look at, to come back?
I, I will sit here and talk about this all night. This is entirely-
We will not. I will tell you that.
I'm being serious. You know, we have, we have delved into this, and delved into this, and delved into this. We are not the only service that is, that is, that knows that this is going to affect us immensely. But it affects the city of Waterville. To me, it affects us the most. And the reason it affects us the most is because of our operational model and how we run. We are the seventh busiest department in the state of Maine right now, which is, it just blows my mind every day I come to work that that's where we stand. But that's where we stand. We are running the same call volume as South Portland. We're just under Auburn, Scarborough. I mean, these are big cities, and here we are, little, little Waterville with my seven-man minimum, and we're doing the same thing they are. My, my, again, I can't stress enough how, how amazing my folks are that they can, they can pull this off. But we can do it because of the way that we are set up here in the city of Waterville. We're two hospitals. We do not hand calls off at all in the city. It's very rare that we call anybody to help cover our calls. We can do that because it is so often that my crews are in, standing in a hospital dropping off a patient when the next call burns out, and my second ambulance is already out the door. And they're turning that call around by saying, we'll go take that. Just give us a minute. It happens all day, every day, right? So, so those bigger departments though, they're running that same amount of call volume that we are with double the staff. So if you look at the staffing in those departments, the Portlands, the Auburns, the Scarboroughs, they have a minimum of 12 to 14 men on, or men and women on, and they're running three ambulances at least. And again, we can do what we're doing the way that we're set up in the city by having two hospitals that we can run to. If one hospital doesn't exist anymore, it completely changes our entire operational model. I am so proud to say that our average call time, from the time someone calls 911 to the time a red truck lands in their do yard, 65% of the time is less than five minutes. That is, it's unheard of, right? It just doesn't happen. 35% of the time is 10 minutes or less. And still, that's a really good number also. But that won't exist anymore with, with one hospital out of the equation. And I know, we talked about this at length today, sitting around this table with all these EMS people and hospital people. I don't want to sit up here and sound like that I'm saying the sky is falling, because I, I don't believe that. But I do believe that it changes how we operate here in the city, and it changes the level of service that we're able to provide to our patients. But it's not just us. It is Delta. It is Winslow. It is those other departments. They are going to be in the same boat that we are, where they are going to struggle to manage this call volume and these longer transport times. They just are. Okay? Another number that I thought was outstanding, or amazing, not outstanding, but 35% of our calls are stacked. So in 2024, we ran 5,700 and change in total calls across the board. That's fire and EMS. 4,476 of those were 911 EMS calls. That's not transports, but that's 911 calls. So 35% of those were stacked, which means 1,566 calls. We had two ambulances out of the barn at the same time. We didn't have another one ready to go. We only got two of them ready to roll 24 hours a day, right? So that leaves no staffed ambulance sitting in the house to cover the city. Again, we're able to do that because, well, the third one rolls in, and my crew was just jumping off the ambulance, unloading a patient. And they're able to, hey, we'll take that one. Just give us a second. We're going to, we're going to basically throw this patient in the ER, we're out of here. That's not stalking ambulance. I mean, sometimes these ambulances come back to the station, and they look like a bomb went off inside of them. It's amazing. But they can do it because of that reason.
And this is because the travel time. So ones over here on-
No travel time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, no travel. We're talking, they jump in an ambulance, two to three minutes, they're sitting at the ER.
But I mean, there's an opportunity for, you know, to utilize Thayer as well. I mean, they still have the emergency department.
Correct, there is. So we ran 902 calls to inland.
How many?
902, just to inland alone. Delta ran 638, and that's not counting the other ambulances services around us. And I don't know what, what that looks like. But we heard a number today that was astronomical. And you got to remember, it's not just us dropping patients off. His patients go in there on their own. I want to say it was 18,000-
18,000, yeah.
Last year. Well, I'm going to tell you right now, in my humble opinion, and I'm just the fire chief, 18,000 people are not going to Thayer. There's just no way. So where are they going? No, I'm asking you, you know what I mean? Like, where are they going? And for us, our closest hospitals now are Augusta, ACH, or Reddington, which 20 minutes down, 15 minutes to unload a patient, do paperwork, get the ambulance back in order. down, 15 minutes to unload a patient, do paperwork, get the ambulance back in order, 20 minutes back, right? And Reddington will be no different. Augusta might be actually quicker, only because we can get on the interstate and make it, make it quicker, right? So remember, 35% of my calls are stacked, or 15, 1600 of them. I don't have the ability to just turn a call around now and come back. So that leads to really long wait times for our people that are calling 911. And people expect a level of service and I think they deserve it, right?
So has there been any discussion about a mutual aid agreement between EMS providers in this area?
They're in the same boat we are, and I don't know how, I know with my two ambulances, I don't have any idea if I have to do this, how I could ever cover a call in Winslow or help Delta out. And the other thing that we have to remember is Delta is Thayer's interfacility transfer ambulance service, meaning all patients that need to be moved out of, because remember, Thayer has no inpatient services. They're just, they're an ER. So anytime somebody has to have more definitive care, they have to leave that ER. That means that Delta has to take their limited rigs out of stock and they have to go take these patients to another hospital. We talked about that at length today, what that number looks like, and it was astronomical. So us relying on Delta.
I, I guess I'm partly wondering if other, you know, if Oakland and Winslow ambulances are operating at the same intensity.
They don't have ambulances.
Oakland does.
No, it doesn't. Oakland does not have an ambulance service.
Okay. I thought they did.
No, it's us, Winslow, and Delta.
Yeah, okay.
But it's also like, you know, because there's the other fact that, you know, if there is, 18,000 went to inland last year. Any one of these ambulances go to like Augusta or Reddington, there could be a, you know, a wait, I guess, you know, to get in.
Mm-hmm.
So that's going to increase the time as well.
And I can tell you that in the last two weeks, we have seen an increase of our own ambulances going to Augusta already, and they haven't closed now. And we learned today, so it was good that this meeting happened, that they, inland has seen a decrease in people coming into their ER, mainly because they know that they're closing, I'm sure. So, but Thayer has seen an increase in there. So I mean, it's all relative, right? I, I am, that is one worry of mine. Another worry is we were told that over 20,000 people are losing their healthcare facilities. I am worried about our folks and they're losing their healthcare. And we've seen this and we're, we're still, we're still seeing the repercussions of COVID in the EMS world right now. People lost their healthcare during COVID, or they didn't want to go to get healthcare because they were scared. So they didn't go to the ER. They didn't go to their doctor's offices. And their health, especially people who are unhealthy, their health got worse. And we're still paying for that now. We have a lot of sick individuals in our area, in an elderly population, in a poor population. So we are hit in many different ways. I can see this being kind of like a COVID situation, where people's healthcare or people's health is going to deteriorate. We have already talked to many people, and of course, I haven't done this myself. So of course, this is all hearsay from the folks that we know. But they have gotten numbers from inland to call this number to help set up your new healthcare, and it's just, they're, they're overwhelmed. The healthcare facilities that are left are overwhelmed.
Mm-hmm.
And so where do these folks go to get healthcare? And a lot of times, people get their healthcare in the back of our ambulance because they've become that sick that they have to call 911. And that is, that is a true reality of what we do today.
Yeah.
And that's not just here in Waterville. That is across the board. That is all EMS agencies across the board. So what, you know, what do, what do we do? How do we, how do we help alleviate this crisis? And I think with our massive call volume here, if we didn't run such a massive call volume, it wouldn't probably be as big a deal as it is now. But because we run such a huge call volume with such a small staff, it's hard, we won't be able to maintain the level of service that we do now. So that's why we put together the second budget. Along with this budget, I, I will say, and I hope this isn't jumping the gun, so if Deputy Chief Flannery is listening to me, I'm going to put a, a kudos out to him. So you've all met our Deputy Chief of EMS and our Deputy Chief of Fire. I'm not going to leave him out of it. He's great too. But DC Flannery works extremely hard behind the scenes on some things like community paramedicine. Community paramedicine to us is a big deal in this area. What community paramedicine is, is supposed to do, or what we're trying to do with it, is to slow down readmissions, but to also keep people, you know, that maybe they don't need to go to the hospital, we can take care of it for them at home, right? So I go in the hospital because of a cardiac issue, right? And I have some type of surgery and they release me and I live all alone. I don't have a way to get back to the doctor, but I need to do a follow-up. I need blood draws. I need EKGs. I need all this stuff. My weight done. I also need to make sure that my house is safe for me, especially if it's, it's a, it's a broken, you know, something, a person falls down and breaks something. So community paramedicine, what happens is a lot of times these people, they don't have a way to go get their meds, or they don't take their meds appropriately. Or they can't get back to the doctor to have this blood work done that they should be having done. So they, they deteriorate until the point that we go pick them up again. And in our ambulance, we take them back to the ER. Twofold, that, that is putting somebody back in the ER, but a readmission before a certain amount of time, the hospital doesn't get any money for that, for a readmission. So it hurts the hospital too. Our community paramedicine work is to go help these people out. Go take their blood draws. Bring it to the hospital, bring it to their doctor, so their doctor can, you know, can read this stuff. Do an EKG, send it to their doctor so they can take a look at it. We do med reconciliation, you know, we'll help people with their meds. We'll make sure that their houses are, are, are safe for them. So that is the, the goal and the role of community paramedicine. We did receive another grant, so that's what we've been looking for, right? So that's exciting. I do believe that with the graces of you folks, and we've been talking with, with admin about this a lot, is I do believe that with this grant and with the help of another grant, that we can turn this into a full-time position this year and try a grant-funded full-time position this year where this person is here 40 hours a week doing this instead of three days a week. I think it will make a difference to try to help alleviate some of these situations that we're running into. But we're getting there. We're getting there slowly, and I'm hoping that we can make this happen this year for sure. So that's, that's kind of how we're looking at this and kind of two different, two different avenues of how are we going to help with the healthcare situation in our area. Have a couple more meetings next week about this with the local ambulance services around us. We do have a couple more meetings with Thayer and Maine General. We have a couple more meetings with our medical director, Dr. Pay, so that together we can try to figure out how this works and the, the best way that this works for all of us. I know that was a really long-winded story and I apologize, but very passionate about trying to help our citizens out.
So this third proposal
Correct.
Is, is basically bringing on another one of our ambulances to a full-time status.
That is correct.
we don't have to pay, we have the ambulance in-house already. This is simply just
We do.
Staff costs.
We do. We have, we actually have four ambulances in-house.
Right.
Two of them full-time, one backup and one for a spare.
Yeah.
The third one goes out pretty often. The, the backup spare is just sitting down in the, in the basement right now. It can be pulled up onto the floor and fully stocked and ready to go in, you know, a few hours. We just have to move stuff off, off one ambulance, put it on that one. So no, no ambulance. We don't need any, any rigs. There is some slight costs that you could see, but really it's, it's eight people.
Okay. Eight people. Two, so two, two additional people per shift.
That is correct. That would put another full-time ambulance on the road. So three of them total. What we talked about today and what my goal is, is it's hard to see, the hard part is, and you know, I always want to be right up front and honest with you, it's not like the last time we put on two ambulances and we saw $1.6 million of revenue walk through the door, right? This is not, there's no more revenue to be had. There's no more calls to be had. The revenue we might see is mileage, because we do get paid per loaded mile. We estimate, now this is an estimation and we were, we're really sticking it out there, but we estimate we could see around $250,000 in loaded mile revenue coming in. So that is a little bit of an offset. There
And that is money that's getting paid by
Insurance.
Insurance or main care.
Yes. It's a loaded mile that we charge per mile. We also could see some revenue stream come in. So if I have a third ambulance on, I cannot do interfacility transfers, which means I can't take an ambulance and run patients from Thayer to Augusta or Portland, because that's not the idea behind this. The idea is to cover the city. What I can do is help Thayer, and if they do have, you know, somebody from Oak Grove is sitting in their ER and they need to go back to Oak Grove, well, then we need to go get that patient and bring it back to Oak Grove because we need to open up a bed, right? So our job would be to help move those in-town patients back to home, wherever home is, so that we can help keep the ER clear. There could be revenue stream from that, but it's going to be minimal at best. Because some of those folks, they're not, it's not a medical necessity, so we can't charge for it. Some of them could be, and we can, you know, if they're going back to a skilled nursing facility. But some of them, they're not. And as far as mileage goes, well, it's not going to be that much. I mean, we're only 14 square miles. So, so we could see some added revenue there too.
Okay. I got a quick, it's not a question, but it's like, kind of just like summarizing up like for the viewers that like, that think that the ambulance wasn't a great idea to begin with. So talking about the state that we're in right now, Waterville did not have the ambulance service. Where would we be right now? I know we're taking a step back, but
I have no idea. I guess I don't, I don't, I do, I'm not, I do not want to talk bad about anybody. And obviously, it's Delta that we would be talking about, right? They would be covering us. Delta does an amazing job with what they do, but they are taxed just like we are. They cannot, I mean, like I said, the other day, we called them and they could not provide an ambulance to the city of Waterville because they were busy themselves, right? I guess you would have to look at Fairfield, Oakland and see how they are, what they are looking to do, and that kind of gives, paints you a picture of what we look at, right? So Delta charges $35 a head, so even if we did want them to cover us, it would be $588,000 for them to cover the city of Waterville. What do we get from that? Well, we get ambulance coverage, but we would be in the boat that we were when we tried to put an ambulance on. And that was the, the long, long wait times to get an ambulance to somebody's house. We would be back in that boat again, and maybe worse, because Delta, as we talked about in this meeting today, they are going to be up against it with this problem also, and maybe in just as bad, if not worse, a way than we are. Because their job is to clear Thayer out and bring those patients somewhere. And that somewhere could, well, it could be anywhere. To just put it in context, the other day, our ambulance was sitting in Portland. I've never seen that since I've been here. But because ACH, it wasn't happening there. So they stop, we will make sure this person is ready to go down there, and then we need you to continue down to Portland with them. So we did. But that's going to happen to Delta too, right? Does that answer that question?
No, it does. I just, yeah, I just wanted to paint the whole picture.
Again, looking back at what we're doing and how we're doing it, we're getting a heck of a service out of this city. I mean, five, five minutes, 65, 70 at the time, five minutes. That is amazing nowadays. That's amazing. And I'm not trying to toot our horns. It really is, if you look across the national average. The other big thing we talked about the other day is, is Everett ran the numbers on ROSC. So when a patient is in cardiac arrest and they're, they're legally dead and we go do CPR and rework them, I think we're close to 60%. So it's like 58% of the time, we're getting back ROSC, which is return of spontaneous circulation, and we're getting them to the hospital. Will they live? I, I don't know, but we've given them the chance, right? The national average is less than 20. That's the type of work that we're doing here in the city of Waterville. That is a massive number. And you know, one of our own went through this a few years ago, and he's upright and, and kicking and working for the city of Waterville still, and he's still him, right? And he was down for 25 minutes. That's an amazing, amazing thing. You know, one, one story like that, it makes it all worth it to me, right? So if you want to go down through here, obviously the fire side doesn't change much. The only thing I did put in was, well, if I have eight more people, I need to find a place where I'm going to sleep. So I did put in for bunks, which is uncommon in our fire department, but that seemed to be the smartest thing to do at this time, would be some bunks and some beds and some lockers. That is kind of the basics of what we would need to get these folks rolling. Where I'm going to put bunks, that would yet to be seen. I'd have to figure that out. One thing that, it's, it's not a problem. It's actually a good problem, but it's something that we are going to have to figure out as we move forward down the road. Doesn't have to be right off the bat, because we can make a few, a few concessions. But we have a very robust female staff on our fire department, which is amazing to me. One shift has four, four females on it. They, they want to work towards the all-female shift. That's their goal. But, and, and it's wonderful because they're, they're killing it every day. I got one, I got one shower in the female locker room. It's not okay. It doesn't cut it, right? That does not cut it. So we're working on trying to figure out something else in the meantime, but we'll have to think about in the future, like we got, we got to have some more shower stalls in the women's bath, in women's bathroom, 100%. But for now, if we could just get punk beds, we'd be good to go. You can see in line 92 is, is the extra 250,000 in EMS revenue. And again, that is a guesstimate on mileage. EMS labor costs, that's, that's where the big, the big cost is, right? You can read down through there and see what those costs look like. I do believe if we were to move forward with this, we would not see as big of increase as that, because I did put in for eight firefighter paramedics at the top of the pay scale, because I just don't know what we're going to get, right? Are we going to get four, eight firefighter paramedics? No. Not unless I steal them from somebody else, right? I'm hoping that we would get four paramedics at least, and then we'd, we'd train the rest of them. But, so I, I do believe that that would come down quite a bit, actually, and that would pull all the other wage stuff down with it. These are the things that we are going to have to increase, or I would like to increase regardless of what happens next. Line 117, training and workshops. We were told today that Purdue Global, which is a training facility up at inland, Purdue Global partners with them and runs amazing Sim Lab. In, but here's, here's what the hard part is. So inland provides our training to our paramedics at a much reduced, if not free, cost, because they believe in what we're doing here. With no more inland, we're going to have to start paying for that stuff. And it's expensive, it is an expensive venture. Like I said, each medic needs 120 hours of training every two years. So we, and we have to provide that for them. I mean, that's, that's their job in the city, so we need to provide that. So I did up that by $10,000 to help cover that cost. Vehicle maintenance, I upped that by $10,000. As we all know, these ambulances on the road accruing a lot more miles, we're going to see a lot more problems with them. Medical labs and supplies, I upped that by 5,000. Even though I do not believe that our, our call volume will increase, and it might, but I don't think it'll increase that much, but I do believe that patient in the back of an ambulance for a longer period of time, we will use more supplies. Medical billing, if we do make an extra $250,000, we will have more medical billing accrued. Gas, oil and lube, that was a best guesstimate, and that was on the old
Rates.
Rates. So, you know, we could play with that too. And then clothing, uniforms purchase, I would have to up that to cover the cost of eight I love being the bearer of greatness, huh?
The thought was, when we gave this to you, was kind of get it to you tonight. We knew there were some meetings coming up, so that you had time to review it and think about it and the impact, and then put it at the last meeting, I think it's the 17th.
Seventeen. That is correct. Seventeenth. That is correct.
So-- Because it's a lot to absorb, and a lot of information, and everything's still not out there. So we asked that we'd just get it to you tonight and then kind of bring it back up. And before we close, I just wanted to say the information-- I think Sarah handed it out or got it out to people?
Yep.
You had asked about the impact for the COLAR. So the middle of this page-- The top one is what's already calculated in at the 3%. The middle, to go to a 4%, would add $40,860.23 onto the existing budget. And to go to 5%, it would go an additional $72,712.35. And that is for everybody that's subject to the COLAR. Some people had to be backed out because they had contract negotiations, and what they received in that negotiation is greater than the COLAR increase, so.
This is for all non-union employees. Correct.
Yeah, this is total non-union majors.
I have-- Yeah, I have the list, if-- But, yes.
How many non-union employees do we have?
Give me one second.
Well, she's counting. I just-- I want to say thank you for allowing me to sit in front of you. These are not fun discussions, and we have not had some fun ones in the last two weeks. And I know that we've got a lot of more of them coming up, but if there are ever any questions, my phone is always available. You can always stop in and see me, and we can chat. And as I get information, I'll make sure that you folks have it.
As it stands right now, we have 40 on the list.
Forty. Okay. Any questions for the chief at this point? We are going to bring him back on the 17th. We'll probably have some more information at that point to update any of the proposals that we have tonight. So if you have questions, like you said, you can certainly reach out in the meantime and further verse yourself on all the things that are currently fluid in that situation, in that arena. So with that, this ends our budget workshop. I do need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personal matters. One, MRS 4056A.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Before you vote, Mayor--
I will--
If I may, at the end of the executive session--
I'm going to get to that.
--there'll be no business.
Correct.
There'll just be an adjournment, correct?
Yeah. I was going to say--